Staff, ready? All right, good morning. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is ten AM, Tuesday, February ninth. Welcome to the City of Denton Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. This is our first meeting for the month of February. And two thousand twenty-one is rocking right along, isn't it? So, first order of business today is gonna be the roll call.
Chair Charlie Shear.
Here.
Vice Chair Brett Evans.
Here.
Mary Caron.
Here.
And Spence Redwine.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, little housekeeping before we, before we get started. I'd like to let you know that the Planning Commission is recommending body only. And outside our decisions on Platts and site plans, which are final, all other decisions that we, that we come to today will be passed on to City Council for final, final approval or disapproval, which will be on their meeting.
February sixteenth.
February sixteenth, thank you. So, uh, we've got a lot of folks here this morning for, for one particular case. Uh, I am going to impose the three-minute rule today. So, um, we have a lot of law speakers. So, uh, I'm gonna ask that if you, we welcome you to come and speak, but please, if, um, if someone's already said what, what you were gonna say, then you can just tell us that, that's your, your sentiment and your feelings as well. And that will save a little bit of time for everyone. Um, okay, uh, first order of business, we're gonna receive and hold discussion on the, uh, take action on the minutes from our January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Any additions, deletions, corrections? All right, seeing none, Chair, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Go ahead.
I move to approve the minutes.
Have a first, but second, Commissioner Redwine? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Item four B, receive report, hold discussion, take action on a site plan for proposed Starbucks to be located at thirty-one twenty-one Regency. Um, Mr. Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. This is item one four seven S P. Here is thirty-one twenty-one Regency Lane as it exists today. For those of you, just for reference, it's the old Golden Chick, right off seventy-five. The developer is coming in and wanting to demolish the existing Golden Chick and build a brand-new Starbucks at this location. The zoning is currently commercial, and it is within the highway overlay. Here's the site plan of the proposed Starbucks. You also have this included in the packet. Some of the problems looking at, um, or current issues that we could see with the Starbucks, right? We see high volume of vehicles, particularly in the drive-throughs. We wanted to pay special attention to that when we were reviewing and providing comment on the site plan. So, to rectify some of those or, or prevent some of those issues, what we ended up working with the applicant on is utilizing the existing alley to the north as a bypass lane or an exit lane. So, if that line is just too long and you gotta get out and leave, then you can utilize that alley. We're working with Public Works to make that, uh, make sure that that can still occur. They can leave through the alley if they need to. We also went ahead and worked with the developer on reconfiguring their proposed dumpster locations. So, the alley to the east is currently un, um, just undeveloped, it's a patch of grass. So, the applicant will be working with Public Works on a licensing agreement to put the dumpster pad inside that alley, allowing them to have an extended drive-through, more contiguous lane. The last thing we want is to have traffic backing up in a Regency. Though today it's really not that heavily trafficked. At some point, we anticipate this area of town to be pretty busy, more so than it is now. So, so, those are some of the things that we've been working on behind the scenes to make sure the site's gonna work for this particular user. This is their landscaping plan. They show a buffer along Regency on the south end of that curve, as well as landscaping around the building. This does meet our requirements and our city ordinance. Here is the facade of the building. It's a pretty standard Starbucks. Uh, one of the things that I'd like to point out is, in the highway overlay, it's a requirement that a hundred percent stone masonry be utilized. They're proposing to use this wood-type material, I'm sorry, stucco-type material that has the appearance of wood. So, there's no variance needed, but I just wanted to make that clear that it's gonna look like it's wood, but it's technically a stucco. And it's pretty standard for the look of Starbucks. I'm sure you've seen that type of wood trim or accent. On a side note, just additional behind-the-scenes work, we've conditionally approved their civil engineering plans pending the site plan approval, as well as the plat. I've looked at the plat, because it's a minor plat, uh, that's something that staff can administratively sign. So, we've, we're, we're, um, the applicant's ready to move forward with their building plans and permits pending this approval. So, staff does recommend approval, and, um, I'm present for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, this is not a public hearing? Okay. This is not a public hearing, but is the applicant here today? Bill?
Um, I was speaking with them recently. They were supposed to be here, but I think something came up.
Weather might have keep, okay, that's all right. All right, any questions, comments from the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed site plan for a Starbucks at thirty-one twenty-one Regency Lane pending final execution of required alley licenses, licensing agreement and civil engineering approval.
My second. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries, all right. Let's move to our public hearing section. Item five A. Mr. Medina?
Thank you again. This is item five A, receive report, hold a discussion and conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation on a request for approval of a conditional use permit for a quadplex located at five-ten West Gandy, case number twenty-two zero dash one-three-seven C U P. The comprehensive plan shows this area to be developed as a downtown center, which aligns as like a mixed commercial with some medium-density uses. The conditional use permit is required for all quadplex structures within the residential infill overlay. So, here's kind of a zoomed-out aerial of the location of the property. So, this is looking south. You have Main Street running east to west, um, and Gandy running east to west, and then just, which would be north of this property, West Sears, east to west. Here's the zoning. Though it is zoned multifamily, when we amended our residential infill ordinance, required anything larger than a duplex to receive that conditional use permit. So, that's where we're at here today. Here's the proposed site plan. Now, it is an existing structure. The applicant wouldn't be expanding any of the footprint. They would be renovate, renovating the interior and exterior, essentially renovating this house to be a quadplex. They have parking to the rear. Our ordinance requires, in the infill, one parking space per bedroom, per unit. Here, they're providing five. Here's their proposed landscaping plan. This is also included in your packets as well. And then the proposed floor plan. So, you would have two units on the top and two units on the bottom. I would like to mention, um, a couple of other things that caught our attention recently or caught my attention recently. While we spend quite a bit of time reviewing these projects and providing comment and feedback to the application, one of the things that I didn't see on the site plan and that I noticed really just this morning was that section twenty-eight point five-three-point-three of our zoning ordinance requires screening between any multifamily development and a single-family, existing single-family development. So, when this project, if it were to move forward and be adopted, that would be a condition to City Council, a recommendation that I would like to add, if possible, to the site plan and to the, to the staff report to ensure that that adequate screening is in place. And we have received, last count this morning, I think eleven letters of opposition to this project, which I've given to you. Some of those are also included in the packet when that was released Friday. Anything that came in after Friday hadn't been added to the, to the packet, but that will be recorded. So, we're present for any questions that you may have, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions for staff?
So, would you, uh, Bill, would you, um, go back to the, the parking portion of it?
Yes, sir.
And you said what's, what is required by the ordinance?
It would be one parking space per bedroom, per unit. So, if this is a quadplex, it would be four, and they're showing five. And that's paved parking.
Is there any restrictions on, uh, on occupants that are in the plan?
Not that I've seen. Um, there might be a requirement in the building code that I might not be aware of in terms of...
So, it's just strictly the building, that's all we can really determine today?
Yes, ma'am. And, um, I think the applicant should have their representative here as well.
Okay, I, um, I have numerous concerns over this project. In, in the modification of the, of the infill district, as far as addressing density, I don't think we've ever intended this kind of density. The proposal is to take this, this structure and modify it. Several things. First of all, this, the drawings that we were, that were submitted show this to be built on a parent-beam foundation. It's not built on a parent-beam foundation, it's built on blocks, as we did years ago. So, the foundation is probably not gonna satisfy building inspections requirements for, for permitting purposes. One. Number two, the driveway is a ten-foot drive. Even though I think the city will accept that, the way it's designed, the approach to the driveway encroaches into the lot next door, which you can't do that either. We've got five parking spaces, and that's nowhere near enough parking for this kind of density. If this were gonna be a duplex, I think I would look at it differently. And if it were gonna be a new structure, I would look at it differently. I have real concerns about what we're doing here as far as what I'm seeing. I have concerns about the structure just in general, you know, from an architectural and engineering perspective. So, but that's, building inspections will deal with that, and, and it's not gonna be pleasant. But, um, I'm just not sure that, uh, I'm not sure this fits at all with what we're trying to do in the infill. I think we're trying to crowd too much into too little. It's a fifty-foot wide lot. And, um, I'm just not, um, I, I just see too many, too many problems with, with what we're trying to do here personally. I don't know how the remainder of the board feels, but that's, that's my feeling, right there.
I have a question too, on, uh, it's to do with the parking concerns. The reality is that one parking place for each unit is probably not enough. And depending on the age of the tenants, you know, if you've got a teenager, two teenagers, that's four vehicles. So, it may look like enough from our, some of our other standards. And for that location, with kind of alleyways we have, I, and, uh, and I don't know exactly, I haven't reviewed enough of it to really get where the parking's gonna be. But I think it would be problematic.
I understand. Would it be okay if some, if the applicant, whenever we open a public hearing?
Absolutely.
Okay, address some of those concerns. Um, one, one point though, can, can y'all hear them okay in terms of the microphones working? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions for Bill? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the applicant if they'd like to come, come forward. Please, uh, state your name and address for, for our record, please.
My name's Alexa Scheinbahn, and this is my husband, Neer.
Hey, Fantion, I'm having trouble hearing her. Would you pull that mic down just a little bit there?
Hi, can you hear me better?
A little bit, there we go.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just a little nervous, there's a lot of people.
Don't be nervous, we haven't heard anybody in a long time.
If ever. So, we're just here on behalf of the owners because they live overseas. Um, and we're gonna be running this project, if it goes through, and also taking care of the tenants that would be living there. Regarding the parking spaces and the apartments that we're gonna be having there, they're all one-bedroom apartments. So, it's either gonna be a, a couple or a single person living in each apartment. Regarding the actual tenants, we do full background checks and credit checks on each tenant that we bring into our properties. So, we wanna make sure that we're bringing in the right people to this neighborhood, people that won't make a lot of noise. And really, our goal and objective for this project is to redo it from the plumbing, the foundation you mentioned, fixing the structure, making it a lot safer and more beautiful, from the inside and out. Yeah.
You know, I think part of the problem is, is that it is a one-bedroom, but, uh, if you have a couple that's living there, I think the odds are that both of them are gonna have a car.
We could add more parking. I mean, there is a lot of space in the back. Maybe we could do tandem parking spots, is that...
I, I don't think so. From a site plan and design, I, I don't think it's gonna be possible for you to get, maybe, maybe you might be able to get one more space in there somewhere, I don't know. But, I mean, I, I mean, this is, um, you know, if, if this were a duplex...
Isn't, isn't it currently a duplex?
I beg your pardon?
Isn't it currently a duplex? Zone doesn't duplex?
I don't know what it is right now.
That, that was what they told us when we bought it.
It, it could be, but I, I think the house was originally built as a single-family residence when it was built. I think that's what it, that's what it was. But, um, again, if it were a duplex, I would say five parking place, uh, spaces is adequate for, for a duplex, no problem. I know if you were to go to our sister city just to the south of us, their requirements are much stricter for, for duplex than, than what we are. But, I, I don't think that you've adequately, um, I don't think you've adequately parked four units with, with what I, what I see. Because you're talking about the kind of tenants that you're, that you're looking for. I think there's probably a ninety-nine percent probability that those people are both gonna have a job, and those people are gonna get up and go to work in the morning, and they're gonna go in separate vehicles. So, then there's the potential for eight vehicles on that site instead of four.
Can we suggest, um, something to accommodate that? Like, uh, parking space, 'cause I'm, I'm sure we have enough parking, like, space to add parking in the back from the way the lot is. The main concern is the parking. I'm sure we can make sure that all the parking will be in the back, even if it needs to be two cars per unit.
I'm gonna respectfully disagree with you on, on being able to put that many parking spaces in the back of the site. I just don't think it's possible. And that's coming from experience. 'Cause it's what I do for a living, so I just don't see any way possible you're gonna be able to park this thing. I really don't. Can you address the, the structural, um, issues with this building and how you're going to correct all of those, those issues as far as the foundation's concerned?
Yeah, we were gonna bring a foundation company to redo the foundation and get an engineer out there and an engineer report done as well. Of course, we would have to do that once dealing with the city and going through all the inspections, so they would come and approve on every stage and make sure that it's up to code and...
That I, that I get. I'm just, again, I'm skeptical as to how you're gonna bring that foundation up to present-day standards.
We're, we're pretty experienced with doing that. We have a few project, not, not here, but we did that a few times in other cities. Structures of that type, um, that's, uh, situation. And it always looks very scary, but we're, we're putting a lot of money in this project. And that's what we intended to do, and addressing all of that as well. Addressing the foundation, and we're basically, when it's gonna be done, it's gonna look like a brand-new house. And we intend to fully work with the city and make sure that we do everything according to code.
Any questions of the applicants? Thank you. Hang, hang tight, we may have something else we need to ask you.
All right, we're here. Thank you.
Okay, I have a whole bunch of cards here for folks that wanna get up and speak. We have numerous letters that have been sent to us. I won't, in sake of time, I won't read all of the letters. I will tell you that all of which are in opposition to this project. And I will tell you that the staff has read these letters. I have read them prior to the meeting. And, um, they bring up very good, um, points that, um, I think we all are looking at that too. It's the density issues that we're concerned with. It's certainly the parking issues that we're concerned with. Quality of folks living there, which obviously they've addressed that already, so... But, again, we have some physical issues that we have not been able to, um, rectify. So, basically, that's what's in these letters. I'm gonna, if, if you wanna come forward and speak, we welcome you to do so. Again, we're gonna impose the three-minute, uh, time limit on, on speakers. So, I guess Fantion, you got a timer over there? All right. First one would be Father Don. Could you put that mask back on? You look a whole lot better, Father Don, with that mask on.
Charlie, that's gonna cost you another cup of coffee. But I gotta show up first, I know. Thank you, one and all, for this opportunity, uh, being here. I want to make clear that I'm appearing as an individual on behalf of my wife and myself. Uh, we live on Gandy, have, and, uh, spent a substantial amount of money redeveloping one of the eighteen-nineties homes on this historic district. Uh, this is a family, this is a single-family home that we're talking about, that's what it's been. We oppose this because we just do not believe it's in the best interest of the neighborhood and its renaissance, both on Gandy and Sears. Where a lot of work's going on. I think I counted nine different projects underway at this time of homes being rehabilitated and restored. Uh, this is a dramatic change. Uh, my concerns with the parking and whatnot like that are, uh, the same as what I'm hearing from you all. And, uh, I'll just say, we do oppose it, and I think the neighborhood at large does. I hope you will listen carefully to the neighborhood. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks. Any questions? Nope, I'm sorry, excuse me. No questions? All right. That may be the shortest he's ever spoke. I guarantee it, Charlie, you know me. Father Don actually married my sister and her husband. And I told him before, I said, "I'm gonna tell you something. If he gets long-winded, I'm outta there, I'm not staying." And you stay? Dean? Is it Bossy?
That's right. Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Dean Bossy. I actually live across the street and adjacent from this particular property. Just follow up on what Father Don has said from the aspect of that. This has been a rental property in this block for quite some time. And over the years, it has been a huge source of issues with us. And, and respect to them trying to get good renters, we know how that usually operates in most situations. This house has been, you know, as becoming a duplex or a quadplex would be extr- extremely detrimental to the, basically to the whole block, because, yes, they'll try and keep, you know, one person per unit and everything, but as we know, most renters have a tendency to draw in roommates when they don't know this and/or have people stay over. So, your parking aspect would actually accumulate more cars up and down this block. And the aspect of who would not care who lives on this block? These people that would come to live here, of course, you know, hopefully would be good people, but an aspect would, bringing aspects in this block that would be detrimental. We are trying to revive our block. All of us are putting lots of money into our homes. We're trying to actually upgrade. The blocks are actually upgrading around the area, as long as, like, the city's trying to do with the whole aspect of downtown. And, uh, duplexes and quadplexes have a tendency, just, they don't have that same sentiment that we do as wanting to keep the area nice, single-family. People have come in, we're actually seeing more kids on the block. We're actually, actually seeing a, a very nice uptake in our area, which ain't seen in decades. And so, with the aspect of duplexes and quadplexes, they don't bring that. We don't see it. In-and-out people constantly trash, problems, this is what they have a tendency to draw. Even though they try to bring good people in, as a renthouse owner, my own, and my own, very difficult to do. Even though we vet our people the best we can, problems come. And so, of us that live on the block, we live here, they don't. And that's why we wanna keep it. Selling it to another family, that would be great, 'cause then they could become part of the community. But renters in-and-out don't become part of the community. It's just a stop-and-go, and it just presents problems. And we don't want no more problems on our block, we're trying to bring it up, standard-wise. 'Cause we do put a lot of money in our homes. And those type of homes can also bring our property values down. Even though we don't like paying the taxes, we like our properties to stay up.
Any questions of speaker? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Let me clarify something, staff. If this were a duplex, if they, if they had decided to turn this into a duplex, we wouldn't be here today, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's all need know, thank you. Is it Yvonne? Five-hundred West Gandy? Yes, is what? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I phonetically spelled it for you. Turner.
Okay.
Okay, I live on five-hundred West Gandy, and I'm one house away from that house. Personally, I have mowed that lawn twice because it was such an eyesore. I know the city will do it, but I couldn't stand it. All the flop housing that had been gone on. I have called the city numerous times about that place with all the drug dealing, everything that's gone on in that place. It needs to be condemned totally, and a home rebuilt, not a duplex. Thank you.
Any questions, speaker? Thank you. Kathy Williams?
Hi, my name is Kathy Williams, and I live at five-eleven West Gandy, directly across. I'm facing the, the house at five-ten. And for the last couple of years, that property has been nothing but, um, trouble. It's been, you could check the police records, how many times I called on problems with that house. And it was supposed to be a single-family dwelling, and several different individuals lived there. And they were constantly blocking my driveway at all hours of day and night. There was drugs, there was beer bottles, there was noise, there was rats, there was everything. I think it should be kept with the neighborhood the way it was. It's mostly single-family dwellings, house. It goes, it goes with the whole, uh, scheme of Gandy Street, the way the families were. I've lived there off and on since nineteen sixty-eight. I don't think a duplex fits in there, and I don't, I don't believe, certainly apartment, uh, because of the parking, because of, uh, traffic, uh, you know, because of several things. But I would like to see it kept as a single-family neighborhood, okay? I think all of us in the neighborhood are trying to improve and update our outside... I think all of us in the neighborhood are trying to improve and update our outside and our inside and working to keep it as a single-family dwelling. Thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Did you come before the Preservation Board? Did it pass? Do you speak it? I guess this is a staff question first. This is within the Historic Preservation Board area, right?
Yes, this is, this is within the Historic Preservation Board.
Because it's on the south side?
Yes, so this does fall under the boundary, where some of the exterior changes, or the vast majority of the exterior changes, are routine maintenance and upkeep that can be done at the staff approval level.
That came through Preservation Board, okay?
It will be pending City Council approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for, just for the record, in the reason why I bill this a minute ago, please understand that the way that the zoning is written at this point in time, that the property could become a duplex without any kind of approval from Planning Commission or from council. Okay, so it's only because they're requesting a quadplex that we're here today. So if they decide to come back and revisit the structure as a duplex, then we're out of the picture, okay? I just want everybody to understand, we don't have any kind of say-so whatsoever on that. All right, Joe, you wanna come?
Good morning. I'm Joe Madden. I own the property directly to the west of it. I actually have a boundary with this property, and I recently built a nice seven-foot privacy fence to help hide that property. I've made many cash offers for that property over the years, trying to buy that house so that I could just tear it down and enlarge my property just to keep it from anything like this happening. We're a nice, quiet little neighborhood there. We have, you know, a lot of elderly people. We have disabled people. We have joggers and bikers that come up and down that road all the time. And if you build a property with four apartments in it, with, you know, up to anywhere from four to 10 cars coming in and out of there, you're just gonna make that a much busier street that'll endanger the lives of the children that are running down the sidewalks, 'cause you gotta cross the sidewalk. They're gonna put the barking in the back. You gotta cross the sidewalk to get to it. And before long, as you've pointed out, there's no way they can put, you know, more than four, five parking spots in that backyard. We're gonna be parked out on the street. And even if they do manage to put four or five parking spots in the backyard, they're just gonna make a concrete driveway back there, and they're, we're losing green space in, you know, downtown where we have very limited green space as it is already. There's, you know, several nice trees. It'd be nice to keep those tall trees there without having to tear it down just to make room for more cars. You know, as pointed out, the owners, they don't even live here. They're from another country. So the only reason they care about making this a fourplex is for money. And so I would implore upon y'all to, you know, take that into consideration. Thank you.
Let me, let me do one more speaker, and then we'll... Did you wanna speak?
Yeah.
He did, he did okay?
Yep.
All right. Uh, we got one more speaker. Let's, let's get that, and then we can address questions, okay? Tara Carabella? Did I get that right? Close enough, good deal.
A year ago, last January, we bought a house here in Dennison because we just fell in love with this community when we would come here and visit. And we spent 11 months restoring that house. I would drive from Dallas five days a week and work on that house to restore it. And we just fell in love with this community. So in December, we bought another house here on Gandy Street, basically to do the same thing. But we sold our house in Dennis, in Dallas, and we own two houses here now because we just thought this community was incredible, and the historic homes here were incredible. And I oppose this because I don't see how you can maintain the historic conservation of a home when you're turning it into a quadplex. And the parking that it would take, you can't have two parking places per unit. You're gonna have visitors, you're gonna need babysitters, and that's just not possible with the amount of parking that's there. And so I want it on the record that I would oppose this wholeheartedly because there's a sense of community here that you don't find in other places. And I want to maintain that integrity and sense of community that I see here in individual homes and the work that I see people putting into their homes here.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome to Dennison. Okay, that's all of the speakers that I have. Is there anyone here that we've missed that would like to speak either for or against this particular case? One more time, anybody here to speak for or against? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And we can have discussion among the commission, and we can address questions at this point. And I physically went over there yesterday to walk the property, and I'm pretty sure that we've got squatters living in the house now. The back door was kicked open, and there was clothing. I, I mean, I didn't go in the house because I was afraid what I would find, so I didn't go in there. But I'm pretty sure that there are probably squatters that are going in there and sleeping in that, in that structure at this point. So that, that needs to be addressed. Any, any comments, questions from the...
This is just a comment more than anything else. My concern that with the parking and the other problems, normally, any improvement is an improvement, as far as I'm concerned. So for somebody to renovate it, it would be, if it was my decision, I would like to see it be a duplex and see it be raised in standard so that it's no longer an eyesore, it no longer has squatters. But I don't think that the duplex is the answer for that.
Bill, has, has code enforcement inspected that property lately?
I don't have the record. I wouldn't know, but I can definitely find out. And I, we can reach out back to you, Mr. Chair, as well as any members of the public or concerned residents if...
Why don't you research that and pass that information on when it goes to council?
We can do that.
Bill, I've got another question similar in that regard. Long before we had the, the code that we have now, there was a home with serious problems across from the ward school. And I would be interested to know how they handled that.
They tore it down.
That was, that was a constant problem 24 hours a day. And so the history from that might be helpful.
I think there's a new house there now.
Pardon me?
I think they've built a new house there now.
Oh, they did. They constructed a whole new house, but I don't know what process they went through in order to accomplish that.
It was lengthy. I know it took a long time.
Which address was that? Do you know?
It was on Sears.
On Sears?
Yeah.
Up mid-block.
Yes, Charlie, I can go ahead and get with Robert Lay, our code enforcement manager, and get some of that information into the report for City Council. I can also give out, if anybody wants my card, you can reach out to me, and I can pass that along to code enforcement, and if you guys see serious issues, we can start taking a look at that again.
And I close the public hearing before I actually fielded your question. So I'm gonna go ahead and field it, even though I probably shouldn't. No, I just need you to ask me from there, if you would.
Okay. Yes, I was gonna mention, because we were kinda talking about the parking. There's a front entrance, there's two front entrances, and when the driveway goes to the back, people invariably would stop their car, like, right at the front entrance, while nobody could get to the back, so they would actually encroach and go on that other people's lawn next to it and go around. Now, since the house has been empty, of course, that hasn't happened. But a situation like that, you know, just takes one or two times.
Okay. I gotta stop you, 'cause, and it's my fault that I closed the public hearing. I was only gonna address a question, so I can't, I can't accept any more comments, okay? Sorry. And it's my fault, my bad. I should've, I should've let you speak before I closed the public hearing.
Well, I could talk for hours on the phone there.
Well, then maybe I'm glad I closed the public hearing. Okay, any other comments, questions? Mr. Evans?
To me, you know, I know the part of that area was to, you know, the goal was, in some parts, to increase the density, but I don't think that's necessarily by making more units per lot. I think that's more, you know, decreasing lot sizes in some cases and so forth. But it's also done on a, you know, almost a block-by-block case. You want to have continuity on a block, and where you have a whole block that's single-family homes, going from that to having a fourplex on that does, to me, doesn't fit. You know, if this was a block where it had other multifamily, you know, or the apartments are across the street from it, you know, different things like that, that, you know, that may be a different, a different story. But, you know, in this particular case, that isn't the story. You've got a block of nice, single-family homes, and obviously you have owners who care, who show up. It's not like nobody cares and nobody shows up. You know, that, that makes a whole different, different story. So, you know, with, with it being like this, I don't see how you can jump from single-family to a fourplex and keep the, you know, keep the character that we're striving for in this area. Our goal is to help continue to improve these, these areas, and I don't think that type of structure is necessarily the, the way to do it, you know, on blocks that are already all single-family homes. That's my two cents.
Mr. Rewine, anything?
Yeah, I don't know that.
Okay. That being said, I'm going to, I'm gonna entertain a motion on this, on this case.
I move to recommend that we not approve the request for the conditional use permit.
Second?
Okay, I have a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 5B.
And that does go to City Council.
Yes, that will go to City Council now for final approval, okay? So it is not a final decision today.
Just for people's audience, that's next Tuesday night. Council usually ends on Monday, but if the president's next Tuesday night at six o'clock, unless the outcome withdraws the case, which they have brought to the draw. They don't draw, it'll make Tuesday night at six o'clock.
Item 5B.
Thank you. This is item 5B. Receive report, hold a discussion, and take action on a replat of Block 1, Shoreside Estates, located at the southeast corner of Hannah Drive and FM 84, case number 2020-152RP. The applicant is proposing to replat a piece of property, five, sorry, six lots into five lots. This is the subject properties here. This was recently platted out in the ETJ. Grayson County hasn't added the property lines in yet, but if you were to look at your plat that's in your packet, you'll see that it's existing as six slots. And due to the natural drainage or natural detention pond towards the south of the property, they're needing to relocate some of those property lines to accommodate their new development. So it's a little difficult to see on the screen, but again, you should have a copy in your packet that outlines how they are proposing to redraw their property lines. One of the things to note, one of the points to note on in my staff report is that Public Works is currently reviewing a water line extension that will be coming, I think it's up FM 88, down 84, and then down Hannah. As well as, you can see right now, this is just a gravel drive. That will need to be brought up to county spec. I think there's a variation or type of chip seal, degree of chip seal, as the county minimum. So I've been working really closely with Mr. Stevenson, I believe they're here. And they're working on getting us, they have submitted, and I think it's their second revision of the water line, as well as working on getting us the first submittal of their streets. So our engineering team will be reviewing that. The plat can be filed when the engineering plans have been executed and have been installed. So staff recommends approval, and this is a public hearing.
Any questions, staff? Thanks, sir. Advocate like to come and speak? It's up to you. It's a plat, so...
The advice I would give is to clear the trees before you put the lot lines down, 'cause then you realize the pond's bigger than you think it is, and you're gonna have to sell two lots to put one house on it. So we just moved the lots to kinda spread them all out and make them bigger. It's really the only change we made. The opposite side of the street, which is actually not necessarily a part of this hearing, we didn't change the lot lines on that plat at all. Just fixed a mistake.
Any questions of the speaker? Thanks, sir. Okay, anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat pending final civil engineering approval and installation of the required utilities and infrastructure.
Motion?
I second.
Have a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries? Did you wanna go over the council? Action?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. So that is 6A. So as we start to include in our packets here, we just wanna give you a brief update on the items that this body has moved on or recommended to City Council. As you can see, everything was adopted unanimously at the previous City Council meeting on February the 1st. So that's all good news, and next meeting, you should see one for the conditional use permit, and the outcome will be included on here.
Any questions or comments concerning the council's agenda, action?
Thank you.
Is that all the business?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this morning. We appreciate you making the effort and the weather to come down and be with us and speak. Seeing no other business before the commission, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned at 10:47. Man, I had so much heartburn about that when I first saw it.
I had a comment, Chris.
Okay, good. All right.